Thank you. Okay, because this is a work session, we don't take any action during work sessions. It's just for discussion purposes only. We're glad to have some guests here. They'll introduce themselves when we get started here and I'll turn it over to Jill Jolik.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I'm really excited to bring this conversation to you all today and have our guests present. We've got guests with us. In person and we have some folks that are with us virtually and I'm going to let them introduce themselves as we work through a rough agenda that we have for this presentation with you all today. And it'll be a short amount of presentation, but we hope a lot of discussion. So I laid a lot of this out in my cover memo, but we have been experimenting with some very good intent to try to gather some information about how we can understand folks that are falling through the cracks, so to speak, that could perhaps be utilizing services in an inappropriate way largely through our emergency services. How do we understand who those folks are? How do we quantify that? How do we capture that from a data perspective? But also, how do we think creatively about how we can work together to, in the short term, provide resources for those folks and connect them to a care provider? One of the projects that we've been, many of the group, the folks that are in the group with you all today have been working on for the last year has been a solution to try to be more intentional about capturing who we're working with and how we can be more intentional about serving folks and connecting to resources through my resource connection. I think you all are aware of the many investments that we've made as accounting into my resource connection. Not only to provide resources or resource referral to the general public, but also to provide a care coordination platform for mutual clients. So we've figured out a way to, from the front end for our emergency providers that are out in the field with Lawrence Douglas County Fire and Medical. The paramedics that are there that are responding to what may not be the needs of clients to be transported for medical care. Sometimes they do need to be transported for medical care. To be able to fill out a form, which we call Community Outreach Referral Form, that Johnson County set up for us just for our, our community that allows the paramedics in the field to be able to identify what are the other needs that those folks have? Do they have housing issues? Do they have issues that relate to behavioral health substance use disorder? Do they need homemaker services? Are they frail and elderly and do they need to be connected to another provider? What we quickly learned and because I've been having these conversations a good amount of time with Division Chief Kevin Jeals with Lawrence Douglas County Fire and Medical, we knew that a lot of these folks were, a lot of folks were also utilizing lift assists. We don't capture the lift assist data in MyRC, but we do see some parallel information of the multiple EMS runs that several folks have. So knowing that LDCFM sees a lot of lift assists for folks that are frail and elderly and/or disabled. That's repeat calls, sometimes multiple times a day. And the paramedics know that there's other needs here that we're never, we have got to solve, but if we're going to make progress with these folks and potentially save their lives and improve their quality of life. We were looking for solutions. So this referral form helped us have some folks that we could start experimenting with. And the chief agency that we knew that we could work with to experiment with intent was JAA and the stakeholders that have been involved in rebooting Project Lively. Project Lively, you're going to hear about that a little bit more here in a little bit, but I, before we dive into that piece and we let Susan introduce herself and some of our other stakeholders. I want to let Division Chief Kevin Jeals, who's online, talk a little bit more about his observations from LDCFM and how some of the resources have been utilized inappropriately perhaps for folks for a good amount of time. And some of the ideas that he's had and what his folks are seeing as they respond to folks out in the field and where he sees opportunities to do some, make progress. Kevin?
Hi, everybody. Division Chief Kevin Jeals, LDCFM. Appreciate the opportunity to talk today. Unfortunately, can, can you hear me? I guess, I guess.
Yep.
Okay, all right. I apologize about not being there. So I'm sitting in a parking lot. So if it gets rainy or loud or you can't hear me, try to flag me down or let me know. So like Jill talked about, we've been experimenting, I guess, air quotes for the last, you know, several months with this. With going forward with MyRC and connecting resources, it's a, it's a bit difficult with the platform in which we're using. But we, you know, we meet regularly in order to attempt to not let people slip through the cracks. Unfortunately, it still happens and you know, we've, we've had some unfortunate circumstances, whether I, you know, I don't think it's pointing the finger at anybody by any means, but there have been some people that have not been able to, to be helped and, and actually, you know, died. And I can't say that that is directly attributed to whether we could have helped them quicker or not, but there are people that were on the list that have passed away in the, and sitting on our list waiting. Having Project Lively be a part of this program has been, has been a good help, but as far as the labor that goes into each client. I think Susan Harris with JAA has classified tiers, a tier one and a tier two. Some of the clients that are on tier one, you know, we can only have a few people on a tier one with the exorbitant amount of resources that it takes to, to tend to those folks. Tier two, we can probably have a few more people on that list. However, one person managing 20 people, I think is a little bit difficult with span of control and the, the resources and the time that it takes in the day. Just being a Monday through Friday, eight to five type of resource. Our folks are seeing, you know, over, over across the board in the EMS side of things and call volume has gone up 15%. Since pretty much every year for the last few years, which means increased medical calls, which means increase needs for resources involving my resource connection, Project Lively, and then any, any other resource that we use on the daily. We have difficulty keeping up. Sometimes we miss emergency call. I'd say we miss, we don't miss a call ever. But we are delayed getting to emergency calls while we're tending to these non-emergency calls, even though they're just as important so that we don't continue to go back, back and back and back. I think we've, we've got a couple and I've got Mackenzie Azell as well, our fire analyst from LDCFM on the call. I don't know if we need to give her permission to be able to speak, but we've got some data that would probably be helpful, but we also have the opportunity to find in mind a lot more data within our systems, but we're, we're having some difficulty doing that because it's sometimes things that we've never thought about in the past to measure. So I think today we could probably come up with some questions that we can get better data unless Mackenzie just happens to coincidentally have it. Have it on hand right now. She just messaged me. I'm not sure if she's on or we have the ability to give her some permission to talk. She just messaged me, so I might have to try to send her a different link. Do we see her on there at all?
Yeah, she should be able to go ahead.
Hello. So as Chief Joel said, we do have the information. It's just a little bit difficult to harvest, so to speak. So we are using one system, which is our report management system, however, to to look at the calls that are EMS based and then also lift assists, which one could argue is also EMS based. Are you guys having an okay time hearing me?
You're fine, Mackenzie.
Okay. Basically, the information is in two separate data sets that we have to export and then join together and then analyze from there to see what patients those lift assists are going to, because a lift assist does not require a patient care report, which includes a name. So it's only reported in our fireside, so to speak, that has no patient information. So that has to do with how we've classified those incident types for a lift assist. But we do have that information for 2021 that we can specifically look up addresses. The problem that we've ran into is our, our houseless population or individuals that we may come in contact with at different locations. And so we have to go by the address, not the name.
And so to speak a little more specifically on that, that, that is something that we can most likely change going forward. Assuming that, you know, some decisions can be made that would make that happen, but in the past, we've not typically considered, like she, like Mackenzie said, a lift assist to be a medical call. If we were to change that to a medical call, then we would have a little bit better time deriving that information going forward. So we're going to start working on trying to make that change. So we have the ability to do that. Last year in 2021, LDCFM alone ran about 815, I think, 800, over 800 lift assist calls. Not having the specific person name to those lift assists, other than just address specific, it's difficult to say how many times one person fell in a year. Lift assist sometimes may be coined as a lift assist, but it may just be assistant invalid is how it's registered in our in the, into the system as would be an assistant invalid. So we have a lot of, we have some data to get, but we, we would be better off if we were to change that into a medical call. Regardless of that, 815 times going out into the community probably could be cut in half, if not even more if, if we were to have some resources that were specifically tied to aiding those folks, but just having one person in Project Lively, assuming that the person is over 65 years old, is difficult to manage all those people in one time. And then having other resources for the people that are less than 65 as well and tying those resources together has just been difficult. Getting, getting the system in place and we've kind of, we've got a good skeleton, but we just, we need to get some meat, meat on those bones in efforts to increase those resources.
And Chief Joel's, I will add to that. He had mentioned changing that incident type of lift assist to an EMS call. How that would impact our emergency resources system would then, right now, with lift assist being technically a fire call where we might send a fire truck instead of an ambulance, that's only for the city of Lawrence. If we open that up to an EMS call, then for EMS services, we would have to respond to lift assist throughout the entire county. But right now, we don't have that full information because we're only responding to lift assist in the city of Lawrence. So that's just one thing to consider.
This Commissioner Kelly, I just have a quick question about changing that to a medical call. Is it billable to insurance if it's a medical call versus if it's a fire call?
If we were to change our fee structure to that, we could probably bill the insurance, but we would have to, it would just, it would really probably just be deemed whether it was a medical necessity or not. I don't think a majority of agencies across the country would bill for a lift assist like that. To my knowledge, but I could definitely find that out.
And Chief Joel's, that's because there's, it would be difficult billing someone who is not riding in an ambulance. The ambulance, and correct me if I'm wrong, does not charge any patient anything if they show up to a home and perform, perform tasks in that person's home or with that person. The charges start when they get into the ambulance and the ambulance starts moving. Is that correct?
I'm not going to say you're wrong. We do have the ability to charge for some items along the line. So maybe a person with diabetes, if we were to start an IV, give them some sugar, recheck their vital signs, recheck their sugar and they were okay and they signed a release to not be transported, we could charge them for that. We don't typically do that. You are correct. We don't typically do that. There are opportunities to charge folks within the community for that, but you're typically, we only charge it for transporting.
This is Commissioner Portio, just another follow-up question. You mentioned that you are doing lift assists within the city of Lawrence, but not within the county as a whole. So what does happen to those calls if they're coming in?
Are you talking about the county? What would happen with the lift assist in the county? First responding agencies such as Baldwin City Fire, Yudora City Fire, Consolidated Fire District Number One, those agencies handle those calls. If they, if they need to be upgraded to a medical call, then they request a medic unit and a medic unit response.
And one thing I wanted to share that, that's a nice segue. Thank you, Kevin and Mackenzie. While we talked about within the city of Lawrence, this project, the Community Outreach Referral Form, it's countywide in scope. Chief Baxter and his, the folks that he works with have been trained on how to use the form and how, and big credit to Kevin for making that happen. And making sure that the training on how to use the form and who it should be used for. He made, made sure that happened. So we do want to dig into some of the data that we do have. I'm going to hand it off to Matt Cravens to share what we've put together to further illustrate what, what we're talking about.
Can people hear me? Okay. Okay, great. And actually, maybe I should bring up the table on, on the screen so everyone can see it. All right. So there is a couple of tables floating around with handouts and Jill's going to bring up the first table here, but I just want to point out that this is MyRC data on all the EMS runs, LMH Emergency Department visits and jail stays and Burt Nash treatment plans and more for people, for all 41 unique individuals who had a Community Outreach Referral Form since the start of the, the referrals, which I believe is about a year ago. So this first table shows the past year services for these 41 people. So again, these are people referred by LDCFM. It shows in the first column, the EMS runs. The second column shows ED visits. Then it shows JAA, J-Hawk, JAA or Project Lively Case Management Services, Burt Nash Treatment Plans and then jail and probation stints from May 2021 to May 2022. There are a few dots in there that you can see. Jill, I don't know if you want to scroll down just a little bit so people can see. So there are a few dots that just show some missing data, but I did, I was able to fill in all the missings for the first few columns. Know that there's sometimes an issue if people don't, if, if, you know, if people don't fill out the name and birth date for everyone exactly accurately. So I had to look up some of these manually. But the first two columns are filled out entirely and what we see is that there were 248 EMS runs for these individuals in the past year. This is an average of six runs per person. And these numbers do exclude LDCFM contacts for lift assists, as Kevin and Mackenzie said, they only include the medical contacts. So a medical contact is included in this data, whether or not the person was actually transported to a hospital or just treated at the scene. There were 231 hospital ED visits at LMH. That's 5.6 per person. That, that really is a lot objectively and more than your typical Lawrence resident, obviously, and more than other people in MyRC. And then about four people have Burt Nash services, about two have jail or probation stints. And then I did note just when I was going through the data that at least one person died since the referral. I didn't do a, a objective tally of this, so it may have been multiple people. As Kevin said, it probably was. I just happened to see one person. And then to the right of the table, what I did is I estimated the total cost of EMS and ED contacts. So the total cost is about $422,000. This is generated by assuming each EMS run costs $641, which is the Medicare payment rate for urban Kansas ambulance transports, advanced life support level two. And then I assume the cost of an emergency department visit was $1,139, which is the average cost of a hospital ED visit in the US in $20, $21. That's according to the Medical Expenditure Panel Survey, which is the best source of data for this cost. So this $422,000 estimate is rough. Please don't take it as the exact amount that these people were being billed for or anything like this. This is not produced using individualized cost numbers. It's just to give us sort of a rough tally of about how much in services they're using. And this doesn't count Burt Nash treatment plans. It doesn't count probation stints or any other services, just EMS and ED. So any questions? I know there's a lot of numbers on here.
This is just some table questions. You mentioned the totals. Would it be possible to have a table with those totals on here?
Oh, yeah.
Because there are a lot of numbers floating around, so just trying to keep them all straight for what we're looking for. Is there a way for, I mean, I know we just heard that the lift assists are not medical, so those are separate numbers. But I think just being able to see by person, these kind of six emergency room runs, do we know that folks who need lift assist may also be people who are disproportionately engaging with emergency department services? Is there any way for us to look across data sets to find that? Or is there just a hunch that there may be some? I saw a lot of nots, so.
When we were, when we were starting to, right, right there. Woo. Okay. When we were beginning the Project Lively revisit in early 2019, that was a big conversation with Kevin and he did confirm, yeah, we, we cannot confirm it. But anecdotally, it was pretty evident that there is a lot of crossover there.
So I'm looking at this table and I'm seeing that we have some, maybe we'd call them high flyers, that we have a lot of loyalty users. Thank you. Ambulance runs and ED visits, but then I see one that's extremely high. We don't check the box under Project Lively. Can you, can you just sort of, maybe some of you who are working in that space, how to, how do we get 45 ED visits, but, but we don't get to Project Lively or we don't have that kind of referral service there? Right. And let me say one thing on Commissioner Portio's question before I forget. So in MyRC, I unfortunately don't have access to the lift assist numbers that's on the fireside, but what I could do is provide the list of names to Mackenzie and she could look up, I believe, am I safe in saying that, Mackenzie, that you might be able?
No, because for us to connect a name with a lift assist, it would have to be an EMS call with a patient care report. But with it being right now classified as a fire call, it gets an infers fire report, which we cannot have any patient information on. So there are no patient names. That's where we would just be looking up that address. So if we had one individual that had, you know, a stable location, a home, and we were to look up that specific home, we can look at those other fire related calls, which would include the lift assist. But that's the only tie. So if it's to the homeless shelter, then we will not know which patient that actually was unless there was more EMS care given beyond a simple lift assist.
Okay. So for the select few individuals who may have a stable address, we could look those folks up maybe and they may not be a random sample, but would we be able to look up just, you know, the few that do have stable addresses?
Yes, as long as we can make some assumptions and parameters of that is the individual that we assume that we are running at that one location and it's not a location that might have multiple individuals. So it can be done definitely by a specific address. At that point, we're assuming the patient.
And so it does sound like these would be low numbers with a lot of assumptions, so it may not be worth going down that road from a data analysis standpoint. It may just be kind of that question of, are we seeing similarities in these populations? But I do want to make sure we return to Commissioner Kelly's question about that referral process for some folks who have high frequency, because there's a person with 45, but then also a person that's kind of 10 or so as well.
I think I can speak to that. Can, can Commissioner Kelly, can you point me which line you're talking about there? Is it the age 64 with 47 runs or am I missing somebody?
Yeah, let's, let's take a look at that one.
So that would not reach, meet the threshold of a 65-year-old that Project Lively could see. The age is 65 and older for that one in particular.
It's age 65 and someone who has disabilities as well.
Actually, it's age 60. So, so that individual could meet qualifications for Project Lively. There may be reasons why a referral hasn't been made or perhaps a referral was made and they refused. I also see that there's two under that same person with Burt Nash treatment plan. So that person's primary concerns may be more related to behavioral health. So if that is the case, we, Project Lively does not necessarily get involved with those individuals as fully or at all because they, it's more behavioral health need related. So, and that could be the reason for any of those not to have a Project Lively referral, if it's a, if it's more behavioral health need or they may have had a referral, but they did not accept service. So they're not showing up in MyRC as being a client or a customer of Project Lively.
And I think if we move to the next, Matt's next handout, that might help illustrate the complexities of, of challenges that folk, that the EMS staff are seeing. So when we, when, when we meet as a group and problem solve around who's the best fit for a referral, just like Susan said, in a lot of cases, making a referral to Burt Nash, and we've had somebody from Burt Nash in our planning meetings just about every week. Sometimes Burt Nash is the best suited. But we've had folks that have refused services that have had been some of the highest utilizers.
And one thing I'll add on this table is, as Jill said, this is the, you know, the internal spreadsheet just with names removed that we use to track whether or not someone's being assisted through Project Lively or somewhere else. And you'll notice that most of the people who are being assisted by Project Lively are at the bottom. There's seven of those individuals. A few might have been referred to Burt Nash or Radac or elsewhere too. And I would say obviously this is a huge help for those seven individuals, but there is clearly a lot of unmet need that you can see from this table because, you know, seven compared to the 41 unique individuals receiving referrals on the previous table just shows that sort of gap and, and the, the need for more genies, obviously. And, and also sort of the cost difference when you think about how much is being spent on these individuals too.
So this is just a snapshot of what we've been able to collect through that form this past year. So the intent of today's conversation is to illustrate what, what are, what our EMS crews are seeing out in the field and we don't have all the answers of how we can serve all these folks. We have made some, I think, some, some very good improvements to having Project Lively integrated into MyRC. We're going to have Heartland Radac integrated into MyRC to help with some of the folks that do not meet Project Lively criteria. But could be incredibly helpful that we've made a couple of referrals on for some folks that are struggling with substance use disorder and again, don't meet that, don't meet the criteria for Project Lively. But today's conversation is really to focus on how Project Lively is playing a significant role so far in being an interrupter of some of these, some of these multiple calls. And we'll talk a little bit as well about making sure that we're not forgetting about our other providers like Trinity and Home Care. Where do they come in here? But I want to let Susan talk a little bit now about Project Lively and what her team is seeing.
I'm Susan Harris. I'm the executive director with J-Hawk Area Agency on Aging. And with this new iteration of Project Lively, myself, Megan with SRC, the Health Department, Kevin was on the committee. There were several members. Really saw the need to have Project Lively come back, but not necessarily in the same iteration it was previously. Really because of the high utilizer needs and the high needs of some of these customers, really decided to kind of pare down the qualifications for, for folks on Project Lively. So it is age 60 and older, but also needs to be a frequent user of EMS service, potential hospital discharge with not a safe plan, somebody experiencing homelessness or other social service agencies that are involved with that person and they're seeing that this individual is at a level of almost crisis, so to speak. So Project Lively is really for those individuals that have some very high needs and high crisis needs. We have the, the three tier, actually three tier basis of our caseload. So tier one would be really, really high need. And I may have said that backwards. Tier three, excuse me, will be really, really high need folks that have just a lot of needs needing to be met to get stabilized. Tier two are folks that maybe we've met some of those needs, but there's some other tertiary needs that still are, are needing to be met for those folks to get them on that even keel, so to speak. And then the tier one folks would be folks that we, we've helped through all these issues and we're kind of just on a, let's, let's hang on to them for a month or two and make sure they're going to stay stabilized before we transition them to case management services through the Area Agency on Aging. So really Project Lively, this iteration is, is really to help those folks that seemingly have fallen through the cracks and, and aren't quite fitting in the, in the areas that are available.
So I mentioned this in the, the cover memo, but you know, what we really wanted to tee up with today's conversation was how we could start thinking about a community approach staging in place. And when our planning group got together, we focused on three areas to, and with Project Lively kind of being the tip of the spear in terms of how do we keep improving upon where we are today and making sure Project Lively is one of our, our lead interventions in this work. But also how do we think about how we can support our other providers that are working with this same population and perhaps in a more preventive manner? So we talked about three areas in addition to Project Lively 3.0, which is kind of just our continuing to improve upon what we have today. We talked about workforce development and the profound need in the community for care providers in our community partner agencies. It's substantial. I think Janine will be a great person to talk about the impact that that's having on Trinity Own Home Care. But I think Megan and Susan can talk about that very eloquently as well. And I'm really excited to know that some really good conversations have already started with. And I'm really excited to know that some really good conversations have already started, um, with our friends at Peaceley Tech. Really gratified that Kevin's here for the conversation today in the audience. But also I've been thinking about prevention. Um, I've had some really good early conversations with folks at LMHL about how do we have them at the table and improve our discharge planning, um, so that we're all on the same page and we're not seeing the kind of outcomes that you see, um, with the folks that are visiting, um, LMH. So at this point, I might let, um, and Megan kind of sits it in a kind of a power position and she's, she's can, she sees all the impacts of this and she's helping, helping tie everybody together in a lot of ways and support folks and get them connected to the different things that are happening. So I kind of, I value her perspective on all this. Um, she's a huge advocate as well. So Megan, I don't know if you wanted to offer any comments before Janine talks?
Sure, I'd be so happy to do so. Uh, one of the things that I think, um, we can apply in the senior population that we have currently, as well as what we're looking for in the coming fifteen to twenty years as our baby boomer population starts to age, as well as become more frail, as their health starts to decline. Currently, you know, we, we do have a decent number of our baby boomers that are healthy and they are thriving and they are living at home and they're doing great. But we know that that is, unfortunately, we've not solved aging. We, we haven't figured out how to prevent that from happening except for one way, and that's not the ideal outcome. But we can apply the twenty-sixty-twenty rule, I think, to the majority of the folks that we are looking at. So it's that twenty percent are doing great. They are healthy. They are completely in control of everything. They're wonderful. We've got sixty percent of our folks that are, they're dealing with a few challenges. They may be on a spectrum as to how well they're dealing with those challenges. Maybe it's some financial issues. Maybe it's some health things. Maybe it's pretty minor stuff that there's resources for. And they're able to access those resources pretty successfully on their own. And then we've got our twenty percent that really are kind of who we're talking about when we reference Project Lively. And, um, and so at this point, I think that that's a, a, a good way to kind of think about the broad senior population um, in our community. We want to make sure that we can prevent, as Jill said, as much as we can, the folks that are in that thriving twenty percent. What are the things that we can do as a community to maintain their health? And, uh, um, and help them continue to age in place as they want to. Uh, and then our sixty percent in the middle, what are the things that we can do to address the needs as they come up in a successful way to, again, just, it's, it's about that delay. How can we delay, um, those greater needs that might land them in an assisted living that they can't afford necessarily? Or putting them, um, at the, the doorstep of Trinity and Home Care? And so what, what are some of those techniques that we might be able to utilize? And then we can really preserve what resources and energy is necessary to address the twenty percent that's struggling the most. And try to make sure that as those folks come along, we're able to give them everything that they need as best as we can. I think one of the interesting challenges, and Susan referenced this, one of the interesting challenges is that there is, these are adults and they have self-determination and they have capacity and they're allowed to make decisions that maybe other people around them think are not the best decision. And they are also allowed to have the consequences of those actions. And we might stand around those folks and it might break our hearts and we might want to stop them from making these, these decisions. They're adults and they cannot be, they cannot, they cannot be, um, told what to do unless we take away their, their capacity. And that's not something that any judge is going to be interested in doing unless it's absolutely necessary, which is a different conversation that has come up with the Adult Protective Services in the area in regards to how do we help those individuals who really don't have capacity, but also don't have anyone that would be an appropriate guardian. So, you know, there's a lot of complexity and a lot of layers. And what we know is that the, the volume of these individuals is going to continue to grow, which is not going to make it any easier for us. So anything that we can be doing now to lay the groundwork, getting systems in place, getting infrastructure in place is really going to help our community do better. Both socio, socio-emotionally better, um, financially better, um, for our whole community going forward.
Janine, I was gonna see if you wanted to offer any perspectives before we dive into discussion?
And just, I wanted to thank everyone for, uh, having this meeting. I think it's really says a lot about our city and our county, uh, coming together and, and taking a look at these issues on a population that sometimes feels, uh, forgotten. I heard someone once say that if, uh, you don't have a seat at the table, then you might just be on the menu. So thank you for inviting me to be at the table today. And, um, I really, um, want to provide a little hope on one hand. And that is, there is some increased reimbursement coming for some Medicaid programs that we, um, look at. And one is the IDD population, Individuals with Disabilities. They are increasing the hourly rate that they're going to reimburse us from, uh, let me see, fourteen-twenty-eight an hour to seventeen-eighty-five. From the outside looking in, that's a, it, that's a huge raise and that's wonderful. However, um, you know, it, it's still at that point where it, it, we're still having a hard time keeping up with, uh, the wages for our caregivers and, and that type of thing. So we're, we are seeing some movement from the state and trying to help, um, these caregivers. But on the other hand, we have a deficit of caregivers. We are, I mean, we have a waiting list of forty-one now, forty-one. We cannot hire fast enough to keep up with the demand on our services here at Trinity and Home Care. It breaks our heart. We don't like those phone calls to say, you know, right now, we don't have a caregiver for you, uh, and it is a difficult conversation to have. So we have a waiting list. And, uh, anything that we can do to try to get caregivers into this field, I think, is incredibly important. I know K-Dads, uh, did a workforce incentive program. We haven't seen the money yet. But it would provide for hiring bonuses. It would provide for retention bonuses for our current caregivers that work with our HCBS clients. So there's a lot of low-hanging fruit out there. It's just that we can't grab it yet because it's just not, it's not ripe. It's not there. Uh, but I think that, you know, this summer, hopefully, we're going to see a change. I'm hoping that the COVID, um, hiring, uh, I don't know what to call it. I mean, it's just, there's, it's just barren. I'm hoping that this coming school year for KU students, that they come back the way that they used to. We just haven't seen that happen in terms of those needing, um, some, uh, part-time jobs that are flexible, that work with their schedule. We are, um, just hungry for caregivers and would love to, um, you know, have any ideas or, uh, any creative minds, uh, work with us to find out how we might, uh, get some of those. So thank you. I appreciate being here today.
At this point, Commissioners, we're, uh, happy to entertain additional questions, um, have a discussion. Are there things that we may, are not thinking about? Are there ways that we can be, um, improving upon how we continue down this path of? Because I think that's what we're committed to, is committed to continuing to imagine what would in a true aging in place plan look like for our community. Um, I think it's, um, we're invested in this space as, as is with our committed funding to Project Lively and Senior Resource Center and, um, Jayhawk in general and, um, Trinity and Home Care, um, but also just our support for Fire Medical Services. I think just that the numbers that you saw there, I think compel us to try to understand, are there better ways to intervene with some of these folks? And, um, so there's any feedback that you all have as we continue down this path, we would, we'd welcome that.
This Commissioner Kelly and I really, so it seems like when we were talking earlier, I mean, years ago, earlier about mental health and behavioral health in our communities. And it's, it doesn't really surprise me that we see them and we start to see people showing up in the emergency rooms or making calls. That's what we saw in mental health as well. And so we had to start to create systems and partnerships. And we're about to open Treatment and Recovery Center. And, and so my question for this group is, is sort of, how might you continue to work together using that same? You know, we, we have the Behavioral Health Leadership Coalition that really brought some people together. And it's great that Kevin's here today. And, you know, how do we get LMH involved? How do we see that this is part of our economic development? Because if we can't care for those who are elderly in our community, we're not going to be able to attract workers to our community, right? And, and, you know, workforce development is part of economics. I mean, this is such a complex system. I think it's so interesting to have, um, LDCFM here to say like, this is where we're seeing it. This is where it shows up. So I'm just interested to hear from you all, you know, what things you're thinking about, about who needs to be engaged in the conversation, who maybe isn't yet? And what's a structure that you can continue to have conversations and partner in ways to help support this community?
I didn't mention it at the, at the outset, but, um, housing, I think, is paramount. Um, and our, my friend Shannon's sitting out there. But, um, when we talked about as a group, you know, what are the overarching things that we know we need? Housing sits right on top of all that, um, workforce as well. So I think housing is a big part, um, and we know that the Housing Authority is a lead stakeholder in that work. But I'd let the ladies comment.
Housing is actually the thing that, that I was thinking about, um, as you were talking. Because just a little background for those who maybe aren't aware, the, um, Home and Community Based Services is the name of the Medicaid program that Trinity and Home Care works under. And when it was originally created, it was because prior to that institutionalization was the norm. And there was this recognition that, um, institutionalization for everybody is not the best option. There are people that it is appropriate for, but for those who are able to live independently in their community, in the home of their choice, with reasonable supports. And that's the, the term that Medicaid uses is reasonable supports. And so, you know, and we, that, they, they clearly don't define that real tightly. And I think they do that on purpose, because it gives them a lot of wiggle room. But when I think about that, housing is an area of reasonable supports that comes to my mind. When we look at a community like Lawrence, where so much of the affordable housing, or more affordable housing at least, are older homes that are not, um, they're not accessible. The mobile, people with mobility, mobility challenges struggle to get upstairs. There are doorways that are narrow. The human body, the way that wheelchairs are currently made and, and human bodies today, bathrooms are tiny. They're just not constructed in a way that's, that's reasonable for someone who's trying to age in place successfully, uh, to necessarily live in. And so, you know, when, when we think about some of these homes in the community, yeah, we've, we've done a lot of building of apartment complexes and that may or may not be defined for student, for KU students and whatnot. But what we know is that those are often not really appropriate for an older individual either. And so what can we do? That's one of the things that I think would be a really interesting conversation, is what can we do to shift some of that affordable, accessible housing conversation to look at some of these older homes? What does it take to take one of those older homes and modify it to make it accessible truly? Does it, can we modify first floors to be more livable and, and not worry so much about some of these second floor homes or basement homes? So I think that's a really interesting area that, um, I know that it's discussed, but I don't know if it's discussed as much as it could be and should be.
I would definitely echo the housing. We do track with our Project Lively customers kind of basic needs that we're helping with. And housing is a, one of the high, high need areas. Another area that we help quite a few folks with is financial stabilization. And, um, Jeannie, our Project Lively Case Manager, has got some people that she's working on a week-to-week, month-to-month basis on budgets with to, you know, learn and understand. I've only got this much income, this much in bills, this is what's left for the month. So she's really even on a weekly basis, you know, going through their, their budgets with them and making sure they're not overspending. So that would be another need to bring to the table, um, to talk about. And then additionally, um, assistance with nutrition, uh, finding food, finding food resources, nutrition, getting them hooked up with Meals on Wheels, but then also the, the food banks and things that are available. Um, and transportation is another one that's a, the higher, a higher need that she works with people. She actually had a gentleman that had moved, um, and she helped him learn how to navigate around his new area of Lawrence. With, with walking and then also riding the bus and the, the T, the T here, right? Sorry. It's a lift into Pico, sorry. So, um, so those are some other areas that, that we're spending quite a bit of time working with folks on Project Lively.
I think that's all we had. Um, we just wanted to make sure that we were sharing with you where our heads are at on this project and that we're going to continue down this path. Um, I think the ideas around, um, um, that we've already talked about, about broadening our stakeholder group a little bit to make sure that we're as comprehensive and, um, as possible, continuing to improve our data collection. You might see some, uh, as the budget process moves through this summer, you might see some budget requests that could help continue us down this path, um, as well. You might see some ARPA requests that continue us down that path as well. But I think what we wanted to make sure you all knew today was that we've been working on this for a good amount of time. We've been continuing to try to refine how we use my RC, um, to, um, to, to make referrals. It's not easy. It's easier said than done. Um, we, when we talked, first talked about how do we make referrals in my RC? And Kevin was kind of chief among them, along with our reentry services. We heard consistently over and over from our project partners, no, no other systems. Use what we have or we, we can't do it. And so we, a lot of gratitude to Johnson County for creating the outreach referral form to us. Um, a lot of gratitude to, um, Project Lively for showing up, um, and continuing to think creatively. And to, um, Fire and Medical for, um, they've, they've really got some caring, um, paramedics that are out there that you can see the frustration in their responses sometimes when they're submitting multiple referral forms and they're not seeing these folks get served. And that's no one's fault. They're, they want to help these folks that they're going out to see sometimes multiple times a day. So we're excited to continue down this path.
I just made a couple of comments. One is I appreciate the data and unfortunately, it, while it's not surprising, we, the data creates limitations, you know, how we report it, what we heard from LDCFM, you know, how we categorize things. And just a simple switch of classifying a Lyft assist as a medical call will have other ramifications, right? That we have to think about and, and that through. What I appreciate is that we're looking at it from a data approach and trying to make data-informed decisions. And that there seems to be still more work to do to get better data. You know, how do we look at this in the right way? But that hasn't put, you know, serving our community and trying to do what we can. You know, it's just so compelling to me to hear how all these things intersect and how hard this work is, um, across our community, because it's housing and it's workforce development and it's health. And I just see all the people that are here and I know the work that you're doing, whether it's food, certain, you know, whether providing nutrition and financial assistance. I mean, that's not something we talk about a lot. It's just financial education. So I think it's a daunting task, but I, I would encourage to continue to work together and, and to meet often, because I do think when those partnerships, we start to see not only how we can work together, but prioritize where those needs are. And that's where we need help, you know, quite honestly, as a commission is, how to determine the smartest place to put our public dollars that will help the most people. But also make sure that we have a, a, a deep net, because we don't want people slipping through the cracks. And so, um, I, I just appreciate the work. Be nice if we had a bunch of answers that we can finish up with today, and this is what we're going to do and move forward. But I think I just want to encourage the conversation and encourage your group to continue to step up and, and bring people together.
I also just want to thank you all for the conversation. I think that this conversation dovetails really well with the conversation we had two weeks ago around housing. Since we know this is one of the big things that is shaping how communities age in place. We also know that we are not the only community. We also know that we are not the only community that's facing this. I mean, you, Megan, you shared some really important of numbers with us. And this is something that's facing communities across the country with how do we really look at boomers aging in place? And what does that mean? And how do we make sure that we're ready and prepared as a community? And here in Douglas County, we're facing some really difficult policy terrain because our state is a state that hasn't expanded Medicaid. And our state is a state that just passed SB twenty seven seventeen where we're saying we're not welcoming. And you know, immigrant populations often do help with a lot of those workforce needs when it comes to care. And so really thinking through what kind of policy environment we're in locally. And then how do we use our local dollars to make sure we're making the best public investments possible? But I think this is an area where locally, we also need to look to the state and say, we need to make some better choices and changes so that we can pull in more federal dollars. And so that we can make sure that our state is one where we can bring in communities to help with the workforce shortages. And we can really be intentional about creating a place where cancers want to stay and can thrive.
So we don't take public comment at our work sessions, but we will recess and for our general business meeting that starts at five thirty and we do invite public comment at that time. If there's anybody that'd like to provide public comment. I want to thank our guests for being here. Thank the public for being here and all those that are tuning in online. We appreciate it. Um, and with that, we will adjourn until five thirty.